Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the -- thank you for joining us for the June 11th Board of Selectmen meeting. I'll read the agenda first. At 7 o'clock, we'll have citizens input. 7:05, we have a public hearing. Smiley Stores LLC doing business as Hops and Grapes Variety Store. 7:20, Common Vicuals Application, new ownership. 7:35, we'll have a flag discussion. 8 o'clock, we'll have a commercial parking lot regulation discussion. At 8:20, application for new commercial parking license. 8:35, an application for commercial parking license, new ownership. 8:50, we'll talk about the taxi and livery service. 9 o'clock, selectmen's update. 9:05, town manager's update. 9:10, assistant town manager's update. And then we have a few action items. Chris, you want to lead us with your new hand?
[laughing] Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, anyone here for citizens input? No, no, seriously. Come on up.
It's an update.
Okay, great. Updates, good.
That's Stevens, 63 Mechanic Street. I just wanted to let you know that the yellow crossing signs went up at Pleasant Street. And that's all.
Was it repainted yet? I know they did --
Nope.
Okay, so I know that they just got to run the common. It was wet, so.
I checked it today. It's not done yet.
I hadn't checked it today.
I did. But, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you. All right, 7:05, public hearing, Smiley Stores.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 11th, 2019, beginning at 7:05 PM in the gala meeting room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, on the application for a change in category from an off-premises annual wine and malt package store license to an off-premises annual all-alcohol package store license authorized by special legislation, Chapter 326 of the Acts of 2018, for Smiley Stores LLC, DBA Hops and Grapes Variety Store, 30 Commercial Street, Foxborough, Mass., manager Ashish Raval. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Come on up.
First, I'd like to submit a map of David's service and green cards for the citizens.
So, good evening. My name is Jeff Lovely. I represent Smiley Stores LLC, DBA Hops and Grapes. The manager and principal of that is Mr. Ashish Raval. He's here in the front row. This has been a long process. Mr. Raval has, for many years, I think since 2005, operated the Hops and Grapes Beer and Wine Store at what I call the Bradley's Plaza.
Always will be.
30 Commercial Street. And has gone through quite a process to seek to upgrade that from a beer and wine to an all-alcohol license over the years, having had many requests from his patrons. So this was actually the result of, first, a town meeting vote, a citizens petition that led to a town meeting vote in 2018, and then the legislature passed the special act authorizing this particular license to be upgraded from beer and wine to all alcohol. So unless you have any questions, I won't really belabor the point. Mr. Raval is a good local businessman. My understanding is he's had no violations. That area of town is not adequately served in Foxborough, so at that end of town, we, I think, lose a lot of business to Mansfield, down 140, and other areas. So we think the public wants this, and we ask that you vote in favor. Thank you.
Want to come up, in case there's any questions?
Officially.
Oh, in case you have any questions.
Okay, fine. Yeah.
Now, to the board, do the board have any questions?
I know this has been an extremely long process. Even prior to my leaving the Police Department for retirement, you were in search of this. And I'm glad that you were able to finally have the ability to have what you had wanted, which was the approval of this license. So I commend you on your patience.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I mean, everything paperwork-wise is 100% in order. I think, to echo what Ed said, patience, stick-to-it-iveness, bringing it to town meeting with a citizens petition, good all around. So I look forward to another package store down there.
I just, you know, everybody talks about the process, and you have to go through the process. The process is extremely long and arduous at times, but the process works. So, you know, all the paperwork seems to be in order. It's been a long time coming. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. You want to say anything?
My name's Gary Nash. I live at 227 Central Street. Our property is a butters to his business, and we're here to support him and his business. He does a good job. I've known him for many, many years, and we're happy to support him.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anybody else? I'll accept a motion to close public.
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Aye. I make a motion to approve application from Smiley Stores LLC, DBA Hops and Grapes Variety Store, for a change in category from an off-premise annual wine and malt package store license to an off-premise all-alcohol package store license authorized by special legislation, Chapter 326 of the Acts of 2018.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Good luck.
All right, little early for the 7:20, but I know Ron's here. If there's -- come on up, Ron.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You can sit if you want or stand, whatever's more comfortable for you.
I'll sit then.
Good.
Thank you. My name is Ron Rogers. I've been in Foxborough since I was nine years old. Now we have a flag issue.
Well, I want you to know that the letter you read to us at the last meeting was outstanding. You did a great --
Thank you. Thank you. There was a lot of work went into that, a lot of people.
You can tell. You can definitely tell. And we've met, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
And I'm going to sort of turn it over to Bill to sort of summarize where we're going.
Okay.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ron, for -- Ron and I have been discussing this off and on for the past couple of years. Ron has brought this to the attention of the town a few times. This is not the first time it's been brought up. We actually -- we've not gotten a lot of complaints about this, quite honestly. I'll be entirely honest with you in saying that. We've got a few. And Ron has been consistently the one that sort of led that discussion.
Yeah.
So none of us here have any interest in doing anything negative towards the flag. I mean, that's -- we've been very, very clear about that from the beginning. And I know that Ron has a different opinion about how the regulations have been followed, but we were very careful to make sure we did not do anything to violate the regulations. So I think there's, you know, well, we may have a difference of opinion on that. Let me finish my thoughts first.
I will.
Because I'll get to that, get to your point. Is that we do have a couple of thoughts about, or actually, one thought that was brought to my attention as to how we might be able to address this in a productive way so that everybody can go on with their happy business. And that is to, that, an idea was brought to my attention that perhaps maybe we can address this by having banners in the town, on the existing light poles that exist throughout, along the central avenue, along the common, that actually provide for air, a space where you can hang a banner, which would actually provide for the Patriots logo, with their permission, of course, and with perhaps the Foxborough High School logo, with the thought being maybe the home of champions, which would actually provide significance to what is, what we're trying to achieve is, is to be proud of the fact that we're the home of the six-time world champions, and at the same time, not do anything that would in any way affect the flag in a negative way. And that's never been our intention to do that, so I want to be 100% clear about that. So that thought was put forward, and I think a lot of people have liked that idea. We haven't formally addressed it with the Kraft Group or with the Patriots to see if they'd be willing to work with us on that. But I think it's something that it's maybe worth pursuing, and certainly if there are other ideas that the board has, we're certainly willing to pursue that as well. But that seemed to be one, which I think was, it was brought to my attention by one of our staff members, who thought that might be a good way to address it, and I thought that would be a good way to address the concerns on both ends.
Can we just, just to back up a little further, because just for clarification, last time we met, I thought that the Patriots' flag was hanging under the American flag. I didn't, I guess I didn't really pay attention and look up when I was driving around, so it's not there now.
Right. It is during games.
During games. So I just want to make sure that everyone, because I didn't understand that, so I want to make sure everyone knows this is only at certain times, not flown all the time, year-round.
Right. So thank you for raising that, because I wanted to clarify that the last time, so I apologize for not taking that, but we'd sticking with our position of not, the town's position of not addressing things on comments. But to clarify that, the flag has not been flown since February, and the last time it was flown was the week of, the Super Bowl week, and also for a week after that. It was then taken down, and it has not been flown since then. The only other times it was flown was during home games for the Patriots, and the day, usually the day of, or the weekend before. It was put up on Friday and then taken down on Monday morning. Sometimes it couldn't be done, because it was during the week, or it was a Monday night game, we may not do it at all. So it was only, it didn't happen all the time, but whenever the opportunity presented itself, it was something that we tried to do, again, to commemorate the fact, the fact that this is significant achievement by a team that is, it calls its home, Foxborough, Massachusetts. So that has been the case for the past few years now, because the Patriots have won two Super Bowls in the past three years, and as a result, this was a sort of a nice gesture to commemorate that. Again, and in no circumstances whatsoever were we trying to do anything that would in any way take away from the flag's significance. And quite honestly, we were very careful to make sure that that wasn't the case, because there were, there was some technical concerns raised initially. Actually, at the time, Mike was the veterans' agent. I reviewed it with him, and he also confirmed for me that that action was being done appropriately as the veterans' agent for the town. So that's where we are, and that's the status. The flag has not been flown, is not hanging there now, hasn't been flown since February.
So is the intent not to put the Patriots' flag back up there?
So that was, so that's the alternative, is what I presented to you as an alternative. Instead of flying the flag.
Well, I think it's two different issues, or two different things. I mean, do we fly the Patriots' flag or not?
Well, that's a consideration that this board can make, if you so choose. If you choose to continue to fly the flag on the designated days, or designated weekends, so that's something you have as an option. The second option would be to, or you could do both. You could do, you could actually fly the banners and the flag, or you could just fly the banners. Those are the options that are there before you.
I think the first decision is, do we put it up at all? And then let's decide, you know, if you have to get with the Kraft Group to see if they're fine with us buying banners and using their logo, that's a, should be a separate decision. I think we need to decide as a board, should it go up on the town common, or shouldn't it? And that's just my opinion.
No, I think splitting it up is a good idea. Ron?
I have a different opinion, but that's all right. The banners would be great if they were on the outside and not on the common. But if there are banners on the common, then it's doing the same thing as putting the flag in the common.
No, it'd be on the light poles, coming down.
There'd be light poles on the outside.
Down Commercial Street.
Yeah, okay. That would be fantastic, you know? The more we can celebrate Kraft, the better he's going to like us. The other thing is the third flag pole. It's a municipality's flag pole. We should have done that, should have been in the design of this place when we built it. You have three flag poles, and you can, you can hang any, you can hang your laundry on the flag pole. There's no law against it, you know what I'm saying? And that's why they have that flag pole. So you can put, you could, Kraft wants to do something special day, boom, Boy Scouts, Foxborough Company, whoever. You know, and then there's, there's no complaints whatsoever, but that is a good idea, and the banners coming into the town, that would, that would dress, especially in the center of town, would dress it up real good.
Yeah.
But they would be on the inside of the common when you're going around, so there's the light posts on the inside of the common, that's what I'm envisioning.
No, not the light, not the low level, though, the streetlights.
Streetlights.
Are on the common.
So like, where the Founder's Day banners are now.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is where they'd be. So they are, like, on the parking inside lane of the common, they're not only on?
They're not inside the common, but they're on the outside.
Right, right. I mean, I didn't even realize we had those. And when I saw the Founder's Day ones, they looked really nice.
Well, visibility on the outside. When you're coming around, you're looking around, on, you're turning, you're looking on the outside of the common, not on the inside.
If I can just correct, for the record, is this, the request to fly the flag was not a request made by the Kraft Organization. That was a gesture made by, on behalf of the town, to celebrate that achievement.
Yeah.
So I, and fairness to the Kraft, was like, this is not anything that has anything to do with them. This was just strictly the town's action. So I just want to be clear for that, for the record.
And the Kraft should be celebrated for what he has done for us, in this town. I mean, it's a great organization. You know? The other thing is your website. Take the flag down, will you please?
That was already done.
Okay.
So I could provide a little more clarification as well, if it's.
Go ahead, Mike.
If the chairman likes.
Yeah, please, I have no idea what you're talking about.
So, back at, back at the time when they, when it was contemplated first, putting up the Patriots' flag below the, you know, the American flag on the common, the town manager asked me, I was the veteran service officer at the time, is there any problem with that? Are we violating anything? Or, you know, are we going against the flag code? And the answer is no. We were not violating the flag code. We were not disrespecting the, you know, our U.S. Ensign, so, you know, so I didn't, I didn't see any problem with that. And so the town did fly it. And I also echo, this has nothing to do with Kraft. This was, and I want to be clear, I don't have a position on this, I'm just, I just want to present facts. But it wasn't about Kraft, it was about, it was about this town's championship team. And so when, when it was first raised as a concern, and Ron did come to me, and another veteran did as well, so I went to the VFW, Post 2626, where I'm a member, and I asked. I said, this has been raised as a concern, is this a problem? And most of the folks there said they would rather have it flying. So there are folks that don't want it flying, there are folks who do want it flying, but just to be clear, it's not violating the U.S. flag code, which is guidance. And there was a request made, I'm not sure if it was Ron or someone else, that the Patriots' flag not touch the U.S. flag. And at that time.
Yes.
Under the town manager's request, there was a special lanyard made that separated the two flags so that the wind wasn't flying, that they wouldn't touch. And that seemed like a reasonable request, and that was done. So I just wanted to share those, you know, those points in time, facts.
Thank you. So do we need any further discussion?
Yes.
Well, can we, can we just, I'm sure that, I mean, Ally's sitting here, did you agree with those same sentiments?
I don't really have an opinion on this either. I'm here just for support, just to.
Yeah.
Figure out what the decision is. But as Mr. John says, there, the flag code is guidance, it's not law, and in legal means, it says "should" and not "shall," which is a big distinction. So there's a lot of "shoulds" and "should not," there's not, there's one "shall," and that's still other countries' flag, should, shall fly above our flag. So the previous DSO and town manager did not break the laws, but I can understand Ron's point as well.
Exactly, thank you. There is no law saying anybody's guilty here at all. There is a statement in here saying you cannot put an advertisement flag on there. If you want to call it something else, then call it something else. But it is an advertisement flag, and that's that story. They say you shouldn't fly that underneath the American flag. Now, that is just somebody saying that. There's no law saying that. If you guys want to stand up, put the flag up and do it that way, it's fine. But actually, the, the third flag pole would just, you could, you could celebrate the Boy Scouts then, and who knows, they've done a lot for this town. They go around doing their thing and just putting up flags, you know? And, and stuff like that. The last thing I'll say is, I went to, after Mike had said that, I went to the Legion to talk to the guy down there. And I walked into Legion, and I looked around, and there was 12 televisions, and in between them was Patriots' flags. And I figured, I'm in the wrong place, and I better get out of here. So that's as far as that went down there.
Not right discretion's the better part of valor, right?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Yeah.
Just ask a question. Bill, was there any conversation with then sitting members of the board about having the flag there?
It came up in conversation, it clearly did. I think Mr. Philmer was the chairman at the time, and we certainly talked about it, and there was, there was support from the board at the time to continue doing it. I thought there was a gesture that was, that came from the board to, you know, maybe do something that was significant, and that was one thought. So this is a case where no good deed goes unpunished, right? So, and this was an attempt to try and do something which we thought would be in favor, helpful for the town, help celebrate the situation that was so significant for the town.
Yeah, I think the intent was, you know, to show Patriot pride in the town of Foxborough.
Right.
You have a lot of people from out of town, coming down 140, going to the stadium, and to see that Patriot flag flying on a home game, let everybody know whether they were for the Patriots or against the Patriots, that they're in Patriot country, and they better get ready. So I think that's what the intent was. You see it a lot in, especially down south, in college towns.
Yeah.
At the State House, they'll have the American flag, and when the college, I saw it in, when I was down in Savannah, they had the American flag, and then Georgia Bulldogs right underneath. So I don't think there was any ill will, or intent towards it.
I'm not saying there was.
So I think, I think we want people to know that Foxborough is the home of the six-time Super Bowl champions. When they're coming into town, they're in the town of champions, and if there's another way to portray that pride, I think we should look at it. I think the flag would, because it sticks up over the common, especially in the, in the fall, you see that flag above the trees. During the winter, you can, you can see it through the trees.
I see it every morning, coming to Coquassus Street, that's the best shot.
Yep. So if we can, if we can find an alternative and keep them up there all during the season, that might even be better. So.
So does it require a vote not to do it, or we just don't do it, and let's look into?
I'm just looking for direction here, folks.
Bill, yeah, so let's, I mean, my thought is, let's pursue the banners, and not till anything else comes up, not fly the flag.
Yeah, I would prefer that course to, don't put the flag up there, and either banners on the light poles, or you could even get flags on the light poles. I think it would be more impressive, driving up those streets, seeing a row of banners. That would be my suggestion.
But if, for some reason, that can't happen, I don't, I guess I don't view the Patriots' flag as an advertisement, I view it as who we are as a community, just one of the important aspects. So obviously, I don't want to disrespect the American flag in any way, but it's a big part of who we are. You know, coming off of Founder's Day, when you go around and ask people, what does Foxborough mean to you? I mean, that's, that's a big piece of who we are. So, you know, it, sometimes it'll give me the goosebumps, coming up the common and seeing the American flag and the Patriots' flag, you know, or on a drone photo, so.
Yeah, I just got to stop today, so long as you're not a veteran there, okay?
Well, I think, I, obviously, I respect.
Excuse me, but if you are a veteran, that is showing disrespect to the American flag, just like the NFL has done to the American flag and the National Anthem.
Hold on, hold on.
And they've had, that's one of the biggest organizations going, just say, hey, we're sorry we screwed up, or say something. They don't want them. Nobody will stand up. There's a whole bunch of men that don't have leadership.
So it sounds like it may be a problem with the NFL, you know, that's kind of trickling down a little bit. It's, it sounds to me like, so I have no, I obviously respect veterans, but I'm here to give my opinion.
Yeah.
And I've heard that there's, you know, that it is something that is okay in the flag code, so that would be kind of where I would be. I wouldn't want to preclude us with a hard and fast rule.
See, it isn't okay in the flag code.
It is.
But the flag code doesn't mean anything, okay? So that, just to straighten that out.
Yes, sir.
So we don't care about the flag code, is that it?
Oh, state who you are and where you come from.
Art Murphy, Comey app, I'm a veteran. Served in Okinawa, Germany, Fort Bliss, Texas, commanded a Nike Hercules nuclear missile site in Rockville, Maryland, taught at Xavier University. So I am a veteran. Spent a year in Vietnam for test, I was there then. I see nothing wrong with that flag flying underneath ours. You could fly the town of Foxborough flag under that one, and it would be okay. You can fly the state flag under it. You can fly the Boy Scout stuff underneath it, and that's okay. And I want to see the Patriot flag there. Okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, I know, I heard from him. Everybody has her rights, that's why it's America. You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
That's why we have veterans, that's why we went to fight, and that's why I'm here.
All right, well, I think what we'll do is, we'll look, we won't fly the Patriots' flag under there for now. Don't have to worry about that for a few more months anyway, but let's look into the banners. Let's see if maybe we can get a meeting with the Kraft Group.
We have no intention of flying it until, it wouldn't be until September anyways, at this point, so. So we'll look at the banners and see if that's a possibility, and remove any kind of concern about it. But if that's, the board's intention is to look at an alternative, just to kind of keep it up, but if that's the direction at this point?
I think so, yeah. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thanks.
Common Vic license app, those people here? I don't see anybody that I don't recognize.
It's not a public hearing, though, right? Like, so would they have to be here?
They don't necessarily have to be here, no.
Well, I guess the next question is, do we have any questions for them?
They would, I'm surprised they're not here at 7:20.
Well, do you want to just move on to something else, and then come back to it, or?
Yes, we certainly can. We can, you know, some of the other stuff's all at 8 o'clock, but we can go down to the, you know, taxi livery discussion, that was mostly put back on, because there was a moratorium. on because there was a moratorium years ago, and just brought it back on for discussion.
Right.
So let's do that. Are you guys okay with that?
One, excuse me. One second.
Yeah, there you go.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there was one question that came, a specific question, I think, that Leah had raised about whether or not there was a legal limitation as to whether you can do that. And it's a little bit complicated in some ways, and not so much in others. So the, there is a limitation, you can set a limitation with respect to taxis based on the amount of population that you have in your community. That's been, number of taxis per thousand has been set, is set in place by the town of Brookline, actually put that, that limitation in. Interesting enough, there is no ability to regulate Uber and Lyft right now. There was no requirement of that at all. The livery service, which is the limousine services, isn't quite as clear either, because that's, that's not done per, per meter. It's based, done per use. So that's, was unclear. So that's the legal position on that. The question really comes before the board as to whether or not there's a need right now. And, and we have not, in our office at least, have not been, have received a lot of requests for expansion of taxi services in the community, by and large because we live in a different era right now, where Uber and Lyft pretty much command most of those types of requests, primarily because of the fact it's, the way the technology works, it's, it's pretty simple for people to use it. So I think that's what's changed the dynamic. I think the dynamic was different many years ago, when Uber and Lyft didn't appear, and, and as a result, there was a different type of need that was at, that was available at that time. Right now, we just don't, simply don't see it. So.
So anybody have any questions? I agree with the town manager in that at one point, inspecting taxis were part of something that the police department was doing, especially prior to about 2011. And those inspections just went away because the services went away, as the new technology that younger people use routinely to get rides has happened. So does the, do you require a board vote to lift any moratorium, or is it just, I mean, there was a moratorium at one point?
Well, we think there was. That's not even 100% clear it was. But we, all we know, we haven't issued, this board has not issued a new license for a taxi service in quite some time.
If there's, if there's no demand, why change anything?
Well, that was my secondary thought, was that just leave it as is.
On the flip side, though, taxis are at such a disadvantage competitively with Uber and Lyft. You know, if someone did want to come in here, why stifle that further?
But, I mean, nobody is, nobody is approached.
Really haven't, really, we've had...
Anybody trying to run a taxi service today, to establish a taxi service, is crazy.
So why put a moratorium on it, I guess?
But we don't even know if there's a moratorium.
It hasn't been clear that we've established that.
Yeah, that's why, because no one's asking. I'm one to say, why even have the moratorium? Why not?
Well, there's nothing that, in writing, that says there's a moratorium.
Well, the one way to address that is if you have an application before you, you can consider it.
I think that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
Deal with it case by case.
Yeah. We'll deal with it case by case, and an application comes before us, we'll look at it, like anything else.
Hopefully, we'll see of them next meeting.
You'll probably see three or four.
All right, great. Why don't we go do some action items? Ready? Yep. Motion to approve the renewal of 31 commercial parking licenses to expire on 6/30/2020.
Second.
All those in favor? I apologize, under discussion.
Under discussion. Based on our discussion we're going to have at, what, 8 o'clock?
Yeah.
Will that affect any of these renewals?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we hold this one.
It would affect one of them in question anyways. Not in question, but.
We should probably hold off on this one.
Yeah.
Right. I, I, well, this one, this one is a new application.
Yeah, but if we're going to...
It's also an additional...
They're both kind of new, aren't they?
Well, one's a change owner, but if we're going to amend the regulations.
Do you amend the regulations first, and then in terms of what?
Good idea. Thank you.
Yeah.
So there was a motion made. It was second. Do we have to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion to withdraw.
Make a motion to withdraw the original motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry.
The next one's okay.
Motion to approve Patriot Place NPP LLC Public Event Application for the 2019 Finish at the 50 Road Race on July 3, 2019.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, under discussion. I'm going to recuse myself. Harvard Pilgrim is making a donation to the organization I work at through this race, so I'm recusing myself.
All those in favor? Motion to accept gift donation of $500 to the Foxborough Recreation Department from the Sharon Credit Union for Booth Movie Night.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept gift donation of $150 to the Foxborough Recreation Department from the Massachusetts Marine Trades Educational Trust to Fishing Derby Supplies.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to accept gift donation of $120 from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors to the Council on Aging Human Services for one half of the April Tai Chi classes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Got most of those going. Got a selections update before I speak? Anybody anything to say? No? All right. A couple of things I have. First of all, I think it was a great start for the farmers market. Their first Thursday night was last Thursday. It was a beautiful sunny day. They had a great turnout. The vendors were outstanding. They had a good turnout with them also, and good start to the farmers market season. Founder's Day was, again, glorious day, nice sunny day. I can't remember the last time I saw so many people down at the booth after the parade. It was just wall-to-wall townsfolk and the people lining the sides of the roads. And I only got to see it for a second, but no one could stop talking about the tank. The tank was a huge hit. And so that was a great day to the, congratulations to the Founder's Day Committee for the great job that they did. Something we haven't brought up in a while, I just wanted to bring up sort of like an update about all the discussions we had six, seven months ago with the Napanzett Reservoir, and our, the town's response to the DEP and in Schneider Electric. And it's been a while. Normally, the DEP responds quite quickly. And the last notice we had from the DEP to the chairman of the committee, Rick, was the letter is currently in management legal review, and I hope to have it shortly. And that was in May. So quite unusual for it to take this long. I take it as a good sign that they're really looking at what the town had to say. One other last thing, since we've got plenty of time, is sort of like, this is my first shot at chairmanship, and kind of want to do a little bit of a, you know, state-of-the-town address maybe, and just catch people up. We don't really, not that I'm going to talk for the next 20 minutes till the next agenda item, but sort of just catch up people with some of the great things that have happened in Foxborough, some of the great things our management team has done on behalf of the town, and where the town is going. Town's going in a great place, and, you know, a lot of it is due to the great managers that we have here in town, and certainly the volunteers. We just did a dedication to volunteers before this meeting at 6:30, and the great job all the volunteers do who work in, in, down here at Town Hall and the various committees. You know, two of the biggest things, I think, that we've done as a town is to be able to have two huge projects, one behind us, this Town Hall, and one coming in front of us very shortly, and that's the Borough School. And I think with proper, you know, financial direction, you know, the town has done a great job not having to do an override for either of those two huge projects. You know, the term is, you know, it's being paid within the town's existing levy, so no debt exclusion had to be done. And especially with the Borough School, the town was able to put monies aside to put down $4 million in that project, which is a huge amount of money that we were able to put aside strictly for the budget, I mean, strictly for this project, to save a lot of money to the townspeople. First of all, not having an override, but it being within the levy. And that, that is a little bit of an offshoot to, you know, our AAA rating. You know, the fact that Foxborough has a AAA rating is truly a testament to what our management team has done over the last few years, the fact that we're going to be able to borrow money at a heck of a lot less of a rate than, than a lot of other towns in town. And that took a full-town-wide process to, and it took years to get that AAA rating, but it was well worth it down the road. You know, having a, the triple bond rating, I'm sorry, Borough School, the development with, with various other towns on the Central Dispatch is also a wonderful program that going forward that saves and will save the town an awful lot of money with that regional dispatch system. And not only were, we were able to get together with three other towns, but Bill Keating, Bill Keating, I'm sorry.
I know that guy.
I grew up with Bill Keating. You know, is chairman of that process, and he's pushed that process along very favorably over the years, to where we're hopefully, what, a couple of months away?
Couple of weeks away.
Couple of weeks away. That's very exciting to pull that, flip that switch. And then the things that have happened on Route 1 to allow, you know, sort of like the domino effect, changing the zoning to allow buildings to go up a little bit higher, working with sewerage down, down, down Route 1, to allow for growth on Route 1 that we just can't even imagine over the next few years. I was at a Chamber of Commerce Awards Breakfast a couple of weeks ago, and the craft group made a presentation on what they plan on doing across the street. So I guess it's no secret anymore. And it's going to be a beautiful office bar. And, and that wouldn't have happened without, you know, things being set in place the years before to allow that to happen. And it's going to be a great benefit to the town. And we can't forget, you know, even having that MBTA station there, how that is also just an integral part of what's going on up on Route 1 and the growth on Route 1, and not just the craft group, but other landowners on Route 1 that are looking forward to maybe developing their land in a different way. So, you know, going forward, you know, we're just going to see some great growth on Route 1 over the next few years, and the town's just going to benefit from that exponentially. I got three pages of stuff. I'm going to stop here. A lot of great things we've done in town, like I said, with our management team, past selectmen, who've done a great job as part of this board, having the foresight, and this board now going forward. So thank you very much for letting me go on for a little bit. Unless anybody else has anything to say?
No, I just, you know, the triple bond rating isn't anything to take lightly. We're only one of 40 communities in the state that has a AAA, AAA bond rating. And then you mentioned the Borough School. That $4 million actually saved the community $1.5 million in interest costs. So, you know, it's, it's money well spent. It's basically returning money back to the taxpayers.
Thank you. That was a huge point. $1.5 million is a lot of money. Great. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, and thanks for going through that, because I, there are a lot of significant things that have gone in this community recently, and doing a lot of efforts for a lot of people, including members of this board. So I, I'm grateful for all your efforts to pull together a lot of these things that happened. So thank you for, thank you for saying that. There's a lot of things going on. First of all, the, I want to give a special shout-out to Lieutenant Rich Noonan, who just returned from the Police National Academy in Quantico, Virginia. He just spent about 12 weeks, if I'm not mistaken, down in Quantico, and graduated from the National Academy, National Leadership Academy. Not many people have done that. I know there's one member of the sport who's actually done that, who's so, but there was not many people who have actually accomplished that. And so it's, it's quite an event when that happens. We intend to celebrate that with, with Rich and congratulate him. And there's going to be some nice pictures that will be in the papers, in the newspaper about him receiving that. We're going to say congratulations to him publicly on that achievement. Just so the board's aware, we don't intend to stop there. We do have another lieutenant lined up for that, that academy next. We're going to try and get another seat in the next few classes to, to get another person to that academy, because it's really important to have that level of leadership in the, in the police department. So congratulations again. Founder's Day, again, a tremendous success, and the committee did a fabulous job. I, too, was truly amazed at the amount of people lining the streets on Saturday. It was a perfect day. Whoever made that special request for that day did really, really well. That sunshine, it was, it was just, it couldn't have been a better day weather-wise. So there was just a great effort by all those folks that do, work so hard for that. And I know that we worked right up until the very last minute, trying to get a few things approved for them, and get things, insurance issues resolved, and all those things that, that worked right up until the last minute. So we're grateful that it all figured out and worked out really well. The, the downtown Business Collaborative is working pretty very well right now to try and pull support together for a lot of the good things, the changes that are going to be happening. Shortly, you'll be hearing announcements about, you know, some of the signage and the wayfinding that's, that's been, efforts have been going on. You know, Leah's been serving on that, that group, that working group. And we're trying to get to a point where we can come up with some announcements on those, and what we can do to try and improve the wayfinding around the town, so that while there is, certainly there's, there's parking opportunities, but there's a lot of times people can't find out where they are. And I think that's a big challenge, and we want to try and fix that for folks. One additional point in terms of parking opportunities that's going to be coming to you very, very shortly, is that we were able to reach an agreement with Schneider Electric to provide us with 43 new spaces in the downtown. They've, they've worked cooperatively with us to try to achieve that, and we're working through the final steps of that agreement. So we're happy to bring that forward to you as soon as we finalize the pieces to that. But we're very, very close to achieving that, so I'm happy to report that tonight, that that's very, very shortly, that it's going to happen to you very, very shortly, shortly. The police chief process will be coming before the board shortly as well, and that is, we're going to be moving forward to, we're designing a process as we speak to replace Chief Baker, and so we'll be moving forward with that fairly, fairly quickly. We hope to be able to announce the process by the, by this month, conduct the process during July, and then hopefully have, make the announcement in August. And just for the board's education, and we intend to, I think we announced it when we first appointed Chief Baker, that we would, we would try and do that with the idea in mind of going back to an internal process following the outside process that we, that we used this past, in the past three years. So the goal is still to stay on that track and to use an internal process with promotion, similar to what we did with the fire chief. And I think that that will be the, of the town, a really good solution. There are a couple candidates that we know of that are very much aligned with... There are a couple of candidates that we know of that are very much aligned with moving into that direction and certainly want to proceed in that direction unless everybody has any concerns about that right now. I think that was the direction that we had talked about several years ago, but even though I know Lear and the chief of Larry was new to this process, but that was the direction that we discussed several years ago. On Friday, on Saturday last week, I actually met, Saturday after following the parade, I was over in Sharon speaking at the Board of Selectmen, the Mass Board of Selectmen's meeting, speaking about regionalization. I actually moderated a panel on regionalization ideas, was able to talk a little bit about the CEMRIC approach, which we're going to be putting into place come July 1. Things are progressing just as we planned. The CEMRIC Board met last week to cover a few last-minute pieces of that, but everything's moving along just as we planned it was, would, and we're going to be starting on time as we originally planned. We'll be, before you, one other thing I just want to, just to follow up on the mitigation for the Hanover Project, I met with the neighbors tonight with Roger Hill. We provided them with some solutions that they seemed to support and we're able to address the needs that they identified in their original meetings and left the meeting tonight feeling confident that we're able to address the needs that they'd asked for. And we're able to stay within the budget to do that. So, pleased to report that out. And then lastly, I want to just indicate to you that we'll be before you at the next meeting trying to do reserve fund transfers for the final year, the year-end transfers. No surprise that our legal budget was over this year and of course, we had another change of issues to deal with in that particular budget. But that, right now, is the only one that I'm aware of that is in the red, but I think most of the other accounts we should be able to do within, with town manager transfers, but we'll give you both of those, those transfers, both categories to consider at your next meeting, which we'll then present to the advisory committee for final action. So, I just want to give you a heads up on that as well. And I have met with several of you on my evaluation for this year, so any of you that still want to do that, obviously that's not part of that discussion, but anybody who still wants to do that, I'm happy to do that and discuss that with you as soon as we can so we can maybe wrap that up at the 28th meeting as well. All right? So, thank you for all of that. Mike, I'll turn it over to you.
So, speaking of the town manager evaluation, I'll be meeting with the former chairman tomorrow. We'll open the evaluations and start the process of doing that aggregate evaluation so that you can discuss that at the, at your next board meeting. So, we recently had Student Government Day here, which was a tremendous success. Many of you were present. Many of our department heads and other staff were also involved and it was fantastic. I had a group, I had three 7th graders up in the HR office and we went through the process of interviewing three staff here for a position that we were getting ready to interview. And it was, these kids are so amazingly bright. We already had the scripted questions, they went through the process and they learned a lot and I, you know, re-learned how smart our young students are here in Foxborough. Then, so we were interviewing for one position, I forced them into hiring two. So, they got to hire their choice and then I forced the bad candidate on, someone who I set up to be the bad interviewer. And so, they hired the two and then we immediately brought the bad candidate in for disciplinary acts of termination, which our young folks really enjoyed, but I think they really enjoyed it. And then they came down here to conduct the Board of Selectmen meeting and it was fantastic. Along that same line, as was mentioned, we just dedicated the volunteer bench and I had the opportunity to talk to the Davis children just afterwards and said, I hope you were inspired by the words, you know, of our leadership and of your mother here to follow in the footsteps of great people in this community, to volunteer, to step up, to be a selectman, a planning board member, you know, a member of any other organization that needs your leadership. And so, you know, this community was built on that. As far as Rich Noonan, you know, what a fantastic accomplishment and he joins less than 1% of law enforcement officials who have earned that achievement and can wear that badge of, you know, going through the National Leadership Academy at the FBI Academy in Quantico. Bill and I earlier attended a memorial service for Chief, former Chief Hobart Boswell, who passed away recently and, you know, and his funeral service was out in Lincoln, Nebraska, but the Fire Department held a very moving memorial service in the fire station and the Class A act, as always there. Family members were there, you know, his widow and two daughters were there and it was truly an amazing memorial service. So, we have received 62 applicants for the Finance Director position. That recruitment is in process. We are still receiving applications, but we are reviewing as they come in and that process is going well. And finally, this week, on the 14th, we'll celebrate Flag Day, so it's fitting that we have a discussion on the US flag, which coincidentally is also the same day as the Army's birthday. So, happy birthday to our two soldiers who got up and spoke in opposition, but they can unite in celebrating Flag Day and the Army's birthday. Thank you.
Just wanted to, Amanda put you on the spot, give us an update on the website?
Sure. So, we, I've been working with IT for a while now to design the new site, so we were able to launch it. Microphone. We were able to launch the website last week. So, we're using these two to three weeks to pull feedback from internal and external and then I'm documenting all the feedback so that way we can show, you know, somebody had a question about this, we were able to address it in this way and then hopefully, I was speaking with the IT director, hopefully we're planning on the first meeting in July to come back before the board and that way we have a fully, well, first month flushed-out new website and we can show the progress behind it. So, if anybody wants to give feedback to the website, there's a Contact Us page that you can submit feedback right to the webmaster so we can track it and address all of them that come in, so.
Do you guys track number of hits to the website?
Yes. Yes, we could track it. I could track it with the old one. This one is leaps and bounds better.
Does it tell you which departments or which area within the website?
It can break it down that way as well. And then we can take it a step further with our, like, social media accounts and break it down to time of day that we get the most response, what's our biggest demographic, so I can try and target our messaging to fit and reach the most people, so.
All the analytics are built into it?
It's fun.
So, I just wanted to say publicly thank you to Amanda and to our, into IT Department for rolling that out. That's, that was no small task. I mean, it's taken a long time to get to this point and so it is significantly better, significantly better than the previous one that we had. There is still things to work out. I mean, one observation we came across today was that the, that the mobile version isn't as user-friendly as it could be. So, we've got some work to do.
So, it's designed to be responsive and I've shown people as they're updating. It's designed to be responsive to a desktop of any browser, a tablet and a phone. The way information was migrated from the old site to the new site, some things need a little bit of tweaking. So, I'm working with each, I'm kind of checking each page as we go and then if there's some kind of issue, we can correct it right then. But it's cool, you can do a view setting and see how it'll look on each device. So, if, like even today, I was testing stuff out and I was able to correct it right then and make sure that it shows. But if something is continuing to not work, I love all the feedback anyway, so.
So, stay tuned. We're picking that information up and I'm feeding that back through Amanda to let her know that too. So, in case you do, anybody sees something that doesn't look right to them, feel free to give it back to us. We can probably fix it fairly easily.
Yeah, absolutely.
No, I was just going to say, be patient.
Yeah, absolutely. Growing pains, but it's fun. It's, everybody's, it's going to suit everybody a lot better and it'll be able for the town to push information out a lot better and more efficiently to everybody, so.
I was going to mention that, you know, before there was a lot of, we kind of weren't posting, not the Board of Selectmen, because I think we do a really good job of posting stuff out there, but, you know, maybe meeting agendas weren't posted to individual pages or minutes or things like that. Is that now going to be easier for individual departments to do and will we be able to get some momentum on kind of cleaning that stuff up that lives outside of?
It is easier functionally. The user interface on the website is much easier. So, coming up with a process for internally to make sure that that stuff is regularly updated is what I'm working on with the Clerk's Office, so it absolutely will be easier. And we're happy to keep adding that stuff, so way easier to upload it though. It's good news.
Got to get the minutes to upload them though. That's been the issue piece.
Right, that's the key piece.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the update. All right, we'll look at, right on time, eight o'clock. Commercial parking regulation discussion.
Mr. Chairman, the, so last week, last, I think it was last Tuesday, we met, a week ago today, we met with representatives from the Route One area and reached out to folks, including Ms. Santos, who was present at that meeting as well. And we went over the regulations, proposed regulation that the chief had, proposed amendment to the regulation that the chief had discussed. Chief O'Leary was a member of that committee as well and served as representative to the board in that discussion. There was quite a bit of discussion about, about the way in which this thing evolved and how we, it was, there was discussion about how, why that change was made and why the change was made as far as the requiring of the sidewalk was first evolved. And then also there was discussion about how this impacts the current situation that we, that alludes to Ms. Santos's application, which we'll see later on tonight. Ultimately, what came out of that was that there was an understanding that the board should have the ability to evaluate applications as they come forward based upon what is considered to really be a public safety issue. And that if you have, if a person has a safe place to walk, that's a consideration that this board can make and has, or should have that flexibility, consider that. And so, therefore, what came out of it was that the board can consider an application and can condition a license, which tells, which will be set in record so that the person is responsible for both and making sure that those standards are put in place and as well as following them. And also notify our public safety folks that there are conditions that people must be held to in order to make sure the public standard, safety standard is met. So, the language that was put in place is really, refers to Subparagraph 13, which is now, would now read accordingly, backing onto a street, a road shall be strictly prohibited. Each licensed lot shall provide for the safe travel of pedestrians within said lot. In addition, each licensed lot shall have a sidewalk access along the frontage or shall have a portion of their lot immediately adjacent to any public way cordoned off with cones, fencing or temporary barriers to delineate a clear, safe path for travel of pedestrians. The use of cones, fencing or temporary barriers to delineate a clear, safe path for travel for the pedestrians shall be subject to inspection by the code enforcement officer, fire chief, police chief and public works director or their designees. The Selectmen reserve the right to deny or condition a license for commercial parking if a reasonable, if, in the reasonable opinion of the department heads, pedestrian ingress and egress cannot be accomplished safely. So, that provides you with a whole lot more clear ability to address this type of situation as it arises. We then had quite a bit of discussion about the specific situation that where you'll be faced with later on, which I'll hold comment on that until later on. But I think generally speaking, there was, there was a pretty good sentiment around the table that we had reached, you know, what we thought was probably the best solution we could reach, given the circumstances that we currently see. And I'll defer to Selectman O'Leary if he has any further thoughts on that, but I think this is, I think what we reached was sort of a consensus.
Well, I think what you have laid out for the board is true. I think that there were members of the committee that probed very in-depth about the applicant's ability to provide safe transit, not so much to the site of her home where the lot is, but getting people safely to the stadium for the events there via sidewalk systems that are part of what we hope is happening. And I thought that the language that was being developed, which is in another section, is reasonable for that case. I think before we do decide, I'd like to hear again from the applicant about the steps that they would potentially be taking.
Right.
And I did get...
But that would be for the specific application at that point?
For the specific application that they would be filing.
Any other comments from the board?
So, when you guys had the meeting last week, you had representatives from the Route One Business?
Route One Business Association.
The gentleman that owns Bach Business Bay is part of that?
Was. He was present. And also, well, we represented from the Craft Group as well.
Okay. So, with this revised language, with his situation, and I think he stated it when he was here, does he already put cones up along that grass strip that people walk?
He doesn't necessarily require that because his is actually further in off the road, so he doesn't, and people do walk in that area as it is now. I suppose the board could require that if they so chose.
Well, he doesn't have a sidewalk in front of him.
No, but he has, he has a grass area that's pretty well delineated, that's been used in the past. And so, as a result, there hasn't been a public safety concern expressed about that one.
Okay. Again, I just want to make sure whatever we change is fair and level across the board to everybody.
The situation, as you'll find in the applicant that's coming, this is actually, cones are really important in this case because the area actually bumps out into the road a little bit and so we want to make sure that that area is properly cordoned off. And also, the area to walk is actually across the street from the property, not necessarily in front of the property.
So, I have a couple of concerns. One, I'm disappointed there's no definition of a sidewalk. Number one. Should be a definition of a sidewalk. What is a sidewalk? And number two, says delineate, clear, safe path to travel. Well, today, in June, everything could be made clear and safe. What happens after a snowstorm or during a snowstorm? Who's going, you get, you issue a license, who's responsible to make sure that there is a clear and safe path to travel?
So, that'll be our code enforcement folks. So, that's the reason why we didn't define a sidewalk, Dave, is because if we, if we did that, there may be times when it's appropriate to move it to a different area to make sure it's provided, is a proper area for people to walk and so it'd be cordoned off properly. But I think having it defined specifically that way could be, because the season does go into winter months and so it does, becomes difficult sometimes to actually limit it to that area. This particular option was, and I think it was best defined, I think it was Mr. Spear who indicated, and he was the one that actually talked about this. He said, you know, as a sidewalk is basically an area that provides for safe passage for the individual. And so, I think that's how they wanted to talk about that as being definition. So, that's the way the committee, the subcommittee looked at it from that perspective.
I guess just, so this leaves it, just I'm making sure I clarify that I understand. This basically leaves it with the professionals that know code, safety, to be able to make that decision. So, we can issue the permit and then they will take it the next step to figure out if it's safe and what's needed.
Well, what'll hap-
See it the other way around?
Yeah, what'll happen is that the application for the definite, the application will come before the board. It will then go back to the public safety professionals to evaluate it and they make a recommendation back to the board.
Will condition the license?
With the, with the conditions. With proper conditions.
Why wouldn't we do it the other way?
Because if we issue a license, then it's issued.
No, why wouldn't we get all the opinions first?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't.
Oh, okay, okay. So, that's what I'm saying.
You're saying the same thing. You're saying the same thing. So, you wouldn't issue the license until you had-
It wouldn't get to us basically if someone said, nope, this isn't safe, they're crossing...
Or they would say, they would say to you, we don't recommend it. Or they would say, they would say to you, we don't recommend it.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Just in regard to that going in the Wayback Machine. You might have noticed in the obituaries about Dimitri passing away, and I can remember as a patrolman back in the 1970s, Chief Gardett having to assign two people in their own car to go up to the Red Snapper to see if there was an illegal parking operation, because there was no sidewalks from North Street going north along the edge of Route One. And several people were parking there, and they had the frozen sandwiches they bought for the $10 in case it ever went to trial for several months. And certainly, he was a unique character in our community that also did a lot of good from that. But it is an issue to have a safe walking space, especially as looking at some of the documents, traffic going to the stadium happens over four hours. The real problem is getting the crowds out at night when an event ends. And that's something that we have to also consider, not just arriving safely, but leaving home, usually in the dark, and the impact it might have.
Great, anybody else? So we should move to accept-
Move to amend the regulations as presented.
Okay.
As amended, rather, we should say.
Make a motion that we take the proposed revised language that has been amended and have it established as parking regulation for condition 13 of our parking regulations.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for all your work, too.
Happy to do it. I like to see that, so.
All right. Ms. Santos.
Come on down.
Alicia Santos, 28 Pine Street.
All right, so we got your application, we've got new regulations. Talk to us.
Before you, because I've applied, reapplied for the license, I believe I've done some due diligence in this project, and I'm not sure if there was more that was expected of me, but I believe I've done everything I can do at this point.
So I guess the big question is, now that we have the new file, our changes, what would you do to come into code? Because you have a unique place, obviously, you know, we've already discussed ad nauseam the, you know, the uniqueness of where you are, but you're also in the business district. What would you, and what have you come up with?
Well, Chief Baker mentioned at the meeting that Pine Street's a very main thoroughway for a lot of foot traffic. It has been for a very long time. And the, what we had proposed with the cones, we would put, place the cones so that all of the traffic, not just my own traffic, but all of the traffic would now be kept safely on the side of the road, everything coming down Pine Street. And with the, with the cones to disiniate where you walk and where you don't walk, it would actually prevent people from cutting through Ron Young's property. So from Chief Baker's standpoint, it's actually a benefit to Pine Street. It would keep people more cordoned off to the side of the road. I, in my original permit from Bay Colony, we have lighting established in the plan. We have, we had thought very thoroughly about all the minor things, the lighting, the snow removal, where the cones would be placed, what type of cones we would purchase. I had spoken with Lydell. I've done a lot of research on how this would improve Pine Street, keep it safe. I mean, there's never been an incident of public safety on Pine Street, but I think keeping people where they're supposed to be would do a lot for that neighborhood, to keep people where they're supposed to be.
Sort of a win-win.
Yeah, exactly.
And you've given your proposals to Public Safety and-
Yes.
They've signed off on it.
I don't know if there was a sign-off process, but I do know he said in the meeting that he approved of it.
I'll certainly, I'll certainly speak to that. So Ms. Santos is correct that the discussion went along the way that, that it actually could actually improve. And I actually took a ride out there and met with the town engineer and looked at that, along with Chief Baker had actually been out there as well. There were two things that were of concern. One is the fact that the traffic, the pedestrian traffic often will go down to the side of the side of the road, on the side of the road, opposite the side of the street where Ms. Santos is requesting the parking to occur. We, I think there was some confusion by the members of the group that were talking that they thought that people were going to be walking on the same side of her property, which is actually not the case. She's proposing that people cross the road, but that she would provide a detail officer there to help cross people safely at that location. And then the area will be cordoned off with the four-foot-high Lydell cones that would actually cordon off the area and provide a safe lane for people to walk through, which isn't the case right now. People sort of walk down the side of the street and then meander through Ron Young's property at Lafayette House, which he has grave concern about, too, because obviously that, that impacts his property and safe conditions there. So the idea was to create these walkways along the side of the road, and I did, was able to review that with the town engineer, who said that actually is the case, that we could create enough space there, maybe even help define that a little bit by, by cleaning the area up a little bit, maybe trim some of the branches out of there, and low-hanging branches to make it easier for people to walk through there. I did meet with Ron out there, and his main concern was that we do not block his entrances to his parking lot, which is understandable. The other, the other issue that was discussed was the, that there is actually a state police detail that occurs at the corner of Pine Street and where they control the actual light signal at that, there's a box right in the corner there, which actually blocks the entrance way onto that sidewalk a little bit. So the area, what the idea would be, to coordinate area off, allow safe passage around the box, and also move the detail officers parking their cars at that corner so they wouldn't block the safe passageway. So the chief did speak to the state police lieutenant, who's in charge of that detail, and they worked out an arrangement to move those vehicles. So the state, to create a safer situation. So those things were all addressed. The recommendation that came out of the discussion, we discussed with Ms. Santos, so she's not surprised by this, is that the license would be conditioned that she would create the safe passageway and have a detail at the, at her, at her parking lot, so as to create the things that we've just talked about.
And the lighting?
Yes.
The lighting, because that's a pretty dark street.
Which is actually safer, too, by the way.
And that was in the permit from the planning board, so it was expected that I would have to do that anyways.
Okay. And you brought up one other point, I'm sorry, Ed. That, you know, during the winter, you would take it upon yourself to get that snow out of that walkway?
Usually, in years past, the town has cleared it. If it is not cleared, I will be responsible for clearing it, and I will clear it.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just one question, ma'am. When people are leaving Route One and they're making a turn into Pine Street, is there two-way traffic at the end of an event, or are they all going over to 115 into Norfolk?
Usually, it's up 115 to Norfolk, there's nobody going down.
So no one is actually trying to counterflow, so even people leaving your lot will take a left and go up to that upper intersection?
Ninety-nine percent of the traffic comes from 115.
Okay.
So what happens in that, in that entrance there, entrance way, is that the, when you get to the end of Pine Street, going on to Route One, to Route One, there's actually three spaces for turns. One is a right-hand turn, one is a left-hand turn, and the other one is the traffic coming in off of Route One to take a right onto, onto Pine Street. What they, the state police does is actually cordons off, cords off the right-hand turn and has traffic go in through the left-hand turn sign. And they don't allow traffic to take a left-hand turn onto Route One. So all traffic has to take a right turn out, and the traffic coming in off of Route One, if you can visualize in your mind, comes in off the left-hand turn lane. So it is cordoned off and provides safe passageway in direction. I'm told, too, that, at least what the chief, and maybe you remember this, too, is that there was, that during, during certain events, that they don't, they make it one way. Like, for instance, I think football games, it's one way in and then one way out at the end of the game, so, or major, in major concerts.
Major concerts as well.
Well.
Do you have a question?
I was just curious about that, meanwhile, when you have just a left turn hold after events, how that, a lot.
Right, I think that would be something-
That could be.
Yeah, might be.
That would be the more prudent thing to do, to go with the flow of traffic.
Instead of putting it out to Route One.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
And then what happens, the traffic, you can then turn back on to 140 if they needed to, to go around.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just assuming, but I believe that people park out my house for the convenience of no traffic, so getting out that way. I think that's the whole point of it.
To not have to touch Route One.
Exactly.
Stay away from Route One, yeah. So I think that's a, almost a natural flow anyway, so.
Any other questions?
Would you have any concerns if we conditioned it left turn only?
Absolutely not.
Great. Anything else? All right. I'll accept a motion.
A motion to approve application for new commercial parking license for lot number 125 at 2830 Pine Street with the following conditions. One, a police detail to be hired, and two, cones or barriers must be put in place to allow safe pedestrian passage from the lot to the Route One sidewalk.
The additional one was the left-hand turn out of the parking lot at the end of the event.
So number three-
But have the police weigh in on that, so I don't want to put a condition in place that the police necessarily don't agree with, is my only, it sounds great in theory, but I'd hate to throw a condition on there that, that, you know, Chris and/or the chief don't agree with.
Add it in there with the approval of-
I can take it with them tomorrow morning, or Mike can actually take up with them tomorrow morning and see if that can figure out.
Ending approval of the-
Ending approval.
For some reason, they said, no, that doesn't make sense for X, Y, Z.
All right, yeah, number three, I think that's a good idea. Okay. And you having lights was just a part of your permit to begin with. We don't have to condition that.
No.
No, they have to.
Planning board required that.
Okay.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Wow.
I agree with you, Mark Foxborough is awesome. I really do.
Well, one process, once again, that's two long processes today. But, wow, good for you to-
Happy ending.
Thank you.
Keep going through.
Thank you, guys. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
All right. Did that, we did that. We're a little early for the other one. You know, going back to the Common Vic app, you know, I'm personally just kind of surprised there isn't a representative here.
Yeah, I don't know if there was a miscommunication on that or not, maybe they just didn't realize that they had to be here tonight for that.
But looking at it, it looks just like Papagino sold all their restaurants to this new company.
Right.
So they're probably doing five bajillion of these, and everyone in place is still the same people.
Right.
If you, if you look at the application, it basically says it's just a change in ownership with a dissolution of Papagino's.
It's an administrative change, is what it is.
Right. So I'm sort of at a loss. Do we prove it, or do we wait and ask them to send a manager or something?
It's the board's, it's at the board's discretion. I, my view of it, though, is that it's pretty much administrative.
Okay.
It's not one that's, not a lot of, a lot of heavy lifting on this one.
Fine. Everybody agree?
Yeah, I do, there's a, there's a letter in there for anyone that want, you know, there's a letter in there basically saying that they sold their assets, and here they are.
All right. All right. Entertainer motion.
So question, question on that, I mean, with that, so they've already gone through the Board of Health stuff on this and everything, and all is all good with this new restaurant?
This is a, this is more, they, this is more of just an ownership change, Chris, so they, they don't necessarily have to reapply for everything, it's just, it's just a change of ownership to let the board know that. So we have to notify, so this is a change for our records. So we'll notify the other boards accordingly.
Right, but on a situation like this, the Board of Health doesn't have to go in and inspect or look at the new ownership group? I mean, we approve this and they can open up tomorrow without anything, or?
They would do their own inspections if necessary to do that. So we would, we'll notify them and advise them that it's been an ownership change. So it's a fair question, but I, but in terms of process, what'll, is once, once it's, once it's approved by us, we'll just, we'll notify the other, other departments about the change. They can determine if they need to do, they're on a scheduled inspection anyways, inspectional process, they can, they can be inspected at any time. Okay.
Entertainer motion, Ed.
Hold on one second. Motion to approve New England Authentic Eats LLC DBA D'Angelo, application for common vigilance to expire 12/31/2019.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All righty. So we only have one more agenda item. The agenda item was scheduled for 8:35. We've got about 10 minutes. I hate to think we'll have dead air, but we might have dead air for 10 minutes if this ever, I don't know if this has ever happened before. But we've got to wait for the applicant to get here. Any other thoughts? Any other comments?
Is this when the chairman usually entertains with song and dance?
Maybe Dave did it one time, I don't know about me.
Couple of minute recess.
On time. I'm on time, I'm ahead of time.
Ahead of time.
It could be good feedback, though, in the future, when we tell them their time to say, you're on at this time, but you should be here. I mean, you should really be here at the start of the meeting, I think, you know?
It'd certainly come 10 minutes early in case-
Half an hour, yeah, whatever it is.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Because it's just the expected time, you know, you could get called at any time, so.
You guys can certainly be efficient at times, which is okay. Nothing wrong with that.
Oh, it's almost 8:35.
It's almost, that's it.
Nine minutes.
So going back to Mike's comment about Student Government Day, I would just like to thank my student members of the Board of Selectmen, who were very nervous about going through a, a board meeting. They didn't know what questions to ask, and I told them, I said, don't worry, I'll, I'll prompt you on questions. I didn't have to prompt any of them on the questions, they asked really super questions. So I think they did a great job. It was fun. It was really fun.
It was, it was really like a real meeting, because there was an agenda, each of the departments made a presentation, and each of the kids that went to the department for the beginning part of the day came up, whether it was engineering or pages, planning, and they all made great-
Doc, we've got to come back to this.
Yeah, but we still really have to wait for-
Okay.
This other one.
Okay.
You know, we have one more action item, but again, we should wait for the other application. Finish up that.
Seeing that we're back on to Selectman's update, too, one thing I don't think we gave enough praise to is Mark Cragg and doing the Senior Olympics and all of the stuff that he is doing with that. I mean, I was shopping last week in Mansfield and walking out, and there's the copy of the Jem magazine, which is, which is great, so he's really doing a phenomenal job.
Really appreciate you raising that, because I agree, we didn't do enough with, with listing that as one of the things that-
It was one of my highlights, that I thought I was going on, and since we have plenty of time now, I want to expand on that, because it was one of my highlights, and that's, you know, Council on Aging and Human Services has experienced the following growth. A 24% average daily increase in senior, senior center attendance. With seven new additional weekly programs in 2019, there was a noticeable increase in male, under-70-year-old population, refined numbers to follow over the next few weeks. A new twice-a-month Veterans Breakfast is averaging 20 attendees per breakfast. As Chris just mentioned, the first-ever Senior Olympics in town with over 70 senior citizens participating. As Chris just mentioned, the first-ever Senior Olympics in town with over 70 senior citizens participating. They also helped make seven new weekly programs possible. Senior centers, senior center now open two nights a week versus the one night a week prior, with no cost increased except for keeping the lights on and staggering the evening staff. So, yeah, that, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, it's just, I've heard so many good things from people that never would go there because they weren't old. They don't need to go there. He's just doing a great job of bringing those people in for all of the different things. And I know Ally's helping out as well with the breakfast and stuff, so just great addition to the town.
I think I saw another cornhole tournament, too, so it's, you know.
Yeah.
Right. So it's interesting, because he's, the approach now is to, is to bring in folks that never thought that even used the senior center or the human services. And so he, it's, he's now, I like to call him like the new Pied Piper, because he's grabbing people from all walks of life to get people to involve. And guess what happens? It's simple changes, but it's like there are things that got people involved in, you know, to have a, he thought that there would be 50 people would sign up for the Olympics, he had over 100. And that's just the first year. So imagine what happens next year?
Yeah.
If the word gets out that, you know, that this is really a big event. And the fact that they were able to finish it at the, at the stadium is extraordinary. I mean, that was, that really gave something, how many people, how many members of that senior group had ever stepped on that field? I mean, that's a great way to finish the day, and it was, it was a great opportunity for them to, to see something extraordinary. So it was, and I can tell, I had the same conversation, I met with the folks up at Brigham and Women's the other day, and, you know, they, they are applying for the use of a new MRI facility, they sent an application, you know, they invited me to go, and it turned out I was the only guy that showed up for this presentation, but it was really great to talk about that. But they were talking about that themselves, and how that was a really great thing to see, you know, and people are really excited about that. So it was really, it's a, it's a great addition, great addition, a great new program.
So since we still have time and we're on this topic, can I make a public service announcement? Directed towards my 80-year-old mom. I just heard that you don't have to be old to go to the Council on Aging and participate in these programs. My dad, after a major heart attack, went and participated in the Tai Chi, along with myself and my wife. You know, it was after working hours, and it was terrific. And, you know, she didn't go because, you know, it's for old people. And we just heard this males under 70 were going. And so you folks who don't think you're old, you can still go there, it's a terrific program. So thanks for allowing me that.
It's kind of ironic that all this physical stuff is what's jarring, you know? It's kind of not what you think of, old school, when you think of the senior center.
Cornhole Olympics.
Two-mile walks. Doing stair climb, stair climbing at the, at the stadium next year.
Let me just see.
And they've got the, you know, the standing raised garden areas, which, you know, they've had there. So for folks that are interested in that, they've still got the knitting, the crafts, the things. A lot of things that traditionally you would expect are still going on and still being very successful. So, you know, new stuff plus the stuff that's already been there, it's just great programs.
Let's see if we can get somebody to be here for this.
Do we know if anybody's coming for this?
All right. Sort of like what we just did before, Dave just brought to my attention. It's really just a change of ownership for this last one, not-
They're not changing any of the-
Not changing anything, so maybe we can-
I think you probably can, I, I believe that's the case, too.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is the terminal lots, right? They've always had a permit, so it's just a total change.
Transfer of ownership is all it is.
It's an entertainer motion. They're probably not coming.
Motion to approve application for commercial parking license for lot 208 at 208 North Street to expire on June 30, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. It worked out well, we gave a nice plug for the senior center for the last 10 minutes. All right, let's do the last action item. Or which, which was the first action item?
Motion to approve the renewal of 31 commercial parking licenses to expire on 6/30/2020.
Second.
Under discussion, does that mean we now have 32, though?
Yes.
Well, it wouldn't be a renewal.
With a new application with, with the license.
But these are renewals, so we're still okay with the 31, okay.
So my question under discussion is, when they applied for this renewal, it was under the old policies. Now we have a new policy, do we have to do anything, go back to them with anything, or?
None of those folks had an issue with, with, as I know, as far as the sidewalk, they all have sidewalks, as far as I know. But, or defined area. So they all fall within that requirement.
So we did, there's no, okay.
Do we need to say, like, subject to review?
I mean, if, if, clearly if there is, we'll, we'll know about it, because, but, but my understanding is that this was a unique set of circumstances that occurred with this one issue.
Yeah, every one of these does have sidewalks, but where we changed the policy after they applied, I wasn't sure.
As long as they have the sidewalk, they're okay anyway.
What is this?
Or a safe passageway, how's that? Does that clarify that? All right, thank you.
Aye.
Opposed. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. No, you said that. Second.
Oh, motion to adjourn, thank you.
No, it's tough.
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor? All right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.